Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the May 5, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Bashertash. Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3, Public Statements.
It's now time for public statements. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you're here for non-consent public hearing items 6A and 6B, this is not time to speak as we will have a separate hearing later in the agenda. You will be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the Seeing no audience member wishing to speak on items on the agenda, does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item Number 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioners request specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion to approving the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Biddle, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Coleman. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Chair Bashertash absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item Number 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for further Seeing no members of the public, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no commissioners, at this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make said motion.
Commissioner Wade, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Chair Bashertash absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Consent Cal-- sorry. Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I would like to explain that Items 6A and 6B will be heard in one hearing as they involve the same project. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will have an opportunity to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given a five-minute time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If you'd prefer, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others by participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your updated staff report on Items 6A and 6B?
Thank you, Chair Kater. Commissioners, members of the audience, thank you for attending tonight. As mentioned, Items 6A and 6B, since they're linked together, will be provided in one presentation, but I will provide additional guidance towards the end. These will be separate motions that your commission will need to take. I would first like to thank Principal Planners Jenny Eing and Linda Mitchell for working on these projects. So this project is located near Brim Hall and Renfro. The vesting tentative tract map is the larger of the-- is the whole of what you see there in the PUD or Plan Unit Development is the southern portion. Sorry, a little slow. So on the vesting tentative tract map, it's approximately 51 and 1/2 gross acres. It consists of some commercial property, single-family property on large and small lots, and multifamily. The commercial is Zone C1. It's one lot, three-- just about three acres in the northeast corner. It's in the red that you see there. At time of development, that will have to go through the formal site plan review process. To the northwest is estate lots. Those are minimum 10,000 square foot lots. There are 14 of those, and those will be single-family homes, and that is on approximately eight acres. And again, that will be a ministerial review that that goes through. Into the PUD portion, and again, this is why we're here, any planned unit development requires planning commission approval. We have a R2 PUD. Currently, this is one lot, just over 12 acres. This will be developed with apartments, 176 units. These will be two-story, about 30 feet high. There'll be four 16-unit buildings and 14 8-unit buildings. There will be options for three to four bedrooms, ranging up to approximately 1,320 square Amenities include a swimming pool, a spa, children's play area, parks between the apartment buildings, and a clubhouse that will offer a fitness facility, community room, and a leasing office. Moving towards the center, that kind of snakes down, this is our one lot, so single-family lots. There are 76 of those. These are on approximately 4,500 square feet lots, consisting a total of 14 acres. And this design will be two-story, about 24 and 1/2 feet tall, four to five bedrooms, ranging from approximately 1,800 square feet to approximately 2,300 square feet, and there will be 76 individual lots. As you can see, it's kind of a quad design there, so they will have a shared drive access in. They'll all come with two-car garages. There'll be patio and options for swimming pools, spa, built-in barbecues. Moving over to the multifamily, which is R2 PUD, there are 56 lots, about 14 acres, and these will be developed with duplexes, 122 units total. These will also be two-story, except for the garage-- garages that are in between are one-story. Again, three to five bedrooms will be offered, ranging from about 1,600 square feet to about 1,800 square feet. Similar to the single-family, this will also have a common drive. They'll provide guest parking on there, two-car garages, private patio, and options for swimming pool. The vesting map will be conducted in eight phases, as you see there. Phase 1 being estate, large lots, and then Phase 2 includes single-family and duplexes all the way down to Phase 8, which will be the final phase, and that will be the apartments. Phase 4 ends with the 98th unit being constructed. And with that, if you recall, on the general plan amendment zone change that we did in December in front of your commission, there was questions on that lot right there on Brim Hall on how it narrows down. That is county jurisdiction. Public Works, the applicant, and Kern County have all worked together, and they've all agreed that prior to the occupancy of the 98th unit, that will be constructed to full arterial width. There'll be a traffic signal installed at that intersection. Prepared for your commission tonight was a memorandum for the PUD, basically revising Condition 3F7. And that was revised. The condition initially just said a traffic signal will be installed, but we wanted it to read similar to what was written in the vesting tentative tract map, so therefore that's being clarified, noting that it's with the occupancy of the 98th unit. That's why the memo's written. Being a master plan community on varying lots, this is something that's a little bit unique to Bakersfield. With that, there are special deviations that the applicant is requesting within the vesting tentative tract map. Pages 3 and 4 describe those deviations, including private streets, double furnished lots, access easements for the driveway. Staff believes all those deviations are justified and recommends approval. And also, pages 4 and 5 of the Plan Unit Development staff report, there are deviations for some of the development standards such as lot size reduction. Some of the lots are being reduced from the 4,500 square foot minimum down to 43, just over 43,000 square feet. Some building setback reductions they're asking for and allow for architectural similarity. Staff reviewed those deviations and concurs and believes that approval is justified on those. There is no deviation for like line-- clear line of sight, so all that safety items have been addressed and will be provided. So in conclusion, we have Item 6A, which is the Plan Unit Development, and Item 6B, which is the vesting tentative tract map. Again, the larger of the two being the tract map and the smaller-- or the southern portion being the Plan Unit Development. After you accept public testimony and deliberations, I will provide directions on how to make a motion. With that, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing on Items 6A and 6B are now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Patricia Newquist. I'm with Cornerstone Engineering. I just want to say what an honor it is tonight to finally bring this project in front of you for final approval. We did give a very intense presentation to you back in December, and thank you, Director Johnson, for elaborating all the nuances of this project. It's been a real community effort, real team effort with everyone involved, beginning with the neighborhood meeting and our original Planning Commission hearing, and then City Council. We took all your comments under consideration, worked extensively with staff, spent many hours, and here we are. So we respectfully request your approval this evening. I'm here to offer the answers to questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no additional speakers in favor, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no speakers in opposition, City attorneys, we will forego the rebuttal period. Is that--
Yes, that's right. Unless any commissioner has any questions to--
We'll do questions before we close? Okay. Before I close the hearing, are there any questions from the commission for the public or staff? Commissioner questions? See? Commissioner, is a-- I'm not going to say it wasn't intentional, but Commissioner Coleman, I think Commissioner Coleman has made his intent to speak known, so I will defer to you for questions. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you very much.
I think all of ours are.
This is for the developer. Can you come back up here? Can you talk to you? Tell us a little bit about the phased timing and what kind of timeframe are we talking about? I get it that the Phase 1 is the estate lots, and that's all nice, but you know, we're really after these other phases, so can you share a little bit about what your anticipated timing is?
Anticipated timing? That's a good question. No crystal ball, but I think that Frolik Development is ready to go on this project. So first off, I know we discussed this in meetings prior to. We have to build a sewer lift station before one single occupancy can be granted, so before we're really even moving dirt, that lift station has to be in place and operational.
Lift station, you guys live in?
It does, yes. It's actually not going to be moved. We originally thought we'd be moving it. We're going to leave it where it's at, in that commercial lot. That's correct. So that stated. That's going to take some time, probably six months to a year, and again, this is all guesswork. And then construction can begin on Phase 1. Phase 1 is the 14 single-family residences on the north side of Brim Hall. All of Brim Hall will be constructed at that point. Phase 2 includes 16 single-family and eight duplex lots. Phase 3, four single families and eight duplex units. Phase 4, when we get into Phase 4, we hit that 98th occupancy, and that was determined to be what the underlying map on that property had, like 100, 101 residences planned, single-family. And there was no condition to do the improvements of the traffic signal and the northeast corner of Brim Hall. So at that point, we looked at this as basically a new project, and occupancy from that point forward will require the traffic signal and the improvements on the northeast corner. And then from there, we're probably looking between anywhere from six months to a year for each phase, depending on home sales and finished construction.
So we're looking at realizing these dwelling units in 2024 through 2026?
Oh, yes, yes.
Has any consideration been made to the parking issues in front of those patio homes and the duplexes as far as-- is there any-- and this may be for staff, may have already addressed this issue, and I might have missed it in the documents, but some restrictions on, you know, parking in these-- I just see these as, you know, good place to park junk cars.
Oh, you want to address that, Paul?
These are single-family homes, so they only require two parking spaces, and if your question is how are we going to prevent junk vehicles from being parked in there, I would say it'd be the same way that we're doing it now, where there's junk vehicles. If they're reported, we will take action on it.
Are there any restrictions in the HOAs regarding those?
There will be, absolutely. This is a private community. It's gated, and there will be restrictions, absolutely.
Is that something that staff reviews? They review the HOA documents or not?
We do review HOA documents, but usually it's what the property owner establishes. We don't necessarily-- unless there's a blatant violation or legal issue, usually we do not comment on those.
Are some of the things that we require as a commission or the council, items that need to be specified in the HOAs?
If you had an item that you would like to be specified in the HOA, we could always add a condition that it be included, yes.
But there is no such in this at this point, where it addresses the parking or any of those other issues?
Like abandoned vehicle parking? No.
Yeah, yeah. All right. When we last met, there were a couple of issues that were restrictions that staff was concerned about, and I would just like to have some explanation on how they've been addressed. One of them was the line of sight at the interior corners. We had talked about maybe putting a stop sign in or something, and Public Works had an issue with that. And then the other issue was the elevations and all the elevations being consistent and where we have a requirement to vary those elevations. Have those issues been addressed, and how were they addressed?
Let me go forward to another slide here. So on the clear line of sight, yes, those were addressed, which is part of the reason they're asking for deviation to go a little bit less than the 4,500 square foot lots, because what they did is in order to move the building out of the-- in order to move the building to make sure there was a clear line of sight, they had to shift the lots a little bit. So some of the lots got a little bit smaller, which is one of the deviations they're requesting. As for building setback reductions, they have a slight reduction, but again, the constraints with the smaller lots, it doesn't allow for what the standard is, but they do have slight reductions or slight variations.
Variations in the setback?
Setback, yes.
But is there a requirement to vary the elevations?
Not-- we don't have development standards for multifamily right now that regard to elevation design. For commercial, yes, but not multifamily.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. I apologize to the commissioners. There does not appear to be a request to speak button, so are there any other commissioners that would have questions? And I will look back and forth until-- okay. Seeing no additional questions, and as there are no speakers in opposition to the project, I will not close the public hearing and return it to the commission for comments in action. Are there any commissioner comments?
You know, I always have comments and everything.
All right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I just want to say that I appreciate the developers' work on this. We've seen this project a few times. I'm personally very excited about this kind of project, because I think this is the kind of thing that we need to be doing as a community, a project that mixes, you know, residential and apartments and duplexes and some linear parks and all those kind of things all together. And so I'm very excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Biddle?
I'm right there with Commissioner Coleman. I'm so excited to see this project come up. It's multi-generational, different incomes, it's community oversight at its best. So when you've got a community that you've got multiple different types, I think this is going to be really exciting for Bakersfield, and hopefully we see more projects come like this in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, I will just give a few comments and then ask for a motion, but I just want to say it's exciting to see the community responding with more diverse housing options throughout our city. It, I think, giving residents the opportunity to live in various parts of our community in different scale and format and densities, I think, is a really nice way for us to grow as a community. I also just want to give a nod. I appreciate-- I feel like I've been harping a lot on the Brim Hall-Renfro intersection, but I think it's nice to know that the project now has specific language in it as far as when the issue of a one-lane road meeting six-lane roads will be addressed within the timeline of the project. So I appreciate the willingness of the applicant to add that as a condition. I appreciate staff and the county's effort in working through the complicated web of city and county land that we see in this part of our community. And with that, I will look for a motion on the project.
I'll gladly move to approve.
If I could, if I could, just for the commission. Again, these are two separate projects, so there's--
Two separate motions?
--separate resolutions, yes. So there's two separate resolutions. So we would be making a motion on Item 6A first, and again, staff recommends adopting the resolution and approving the PUD, as you see on the screen up there. So that will need to be voted on first before we move to a motion for Item 6B.
Okay, well, I will amend my request to-- may I get a motion on 6A? Commissioner Biddle?
I'll make a motion to approve.
For 6A?
I would second that motion.
Commissioner Coleman. Commissioners, please cast your votes on Item 6A.
Motion is approved with Chair-- sorry, Vice Chair Bashertash absent and Commissioner Neal abstaining.
We will now move on to Item 6B. As we did the hearing together, I will move to request a motion on Item 6B.
I'd like to make a motion to approve vesting tentative tract map 7396 incorporating all of staff's recommendations.
That's a motion from Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Commissioner Wade, confident Commissioner Wade. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item Number 7, Communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
Yes, I see that Assistant City Manager Gary Holland is in the audience. If he would stand to be recognized. So again, he's one of the new Assistant City Managers. We will be having a meeting on May 19 in two weeks, and we have some projects that will be needing your consideration. So as with other meetings, everything will be provided in advance. If you have any questions, please reach out to me directly. That's all I have.
Thank you, and welcome to the City Manager's Office. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 8, Commission Comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments? Seeing no commissioner comments, I will just like to extend, I missed our last meeting, so welcome to Commissioner Neal. We're glad to have you and look forward to working with you. With that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item Number 9, Adjournment.
Meeting is adjourned at 5:59. Meeting is adjourned at 5:59.